Okay.
Oh, that's cool. It says recording in progress.
That's cool.
That's ever happened before.
All right. Okay, if you please join me, we're gonna open up the Estacada City Council meeting and if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so can I get roll call, please?
Counselor Dunsmear. Counselor Gates. Counselor Hughes. Chair. Counselor Littkey.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Ten Bush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here. Thank you very much, Sadie. First on our list, we have the guest presentation by the Estacada Community Watch, Kim Thompson.
Yes, I will bring her in. I believe this is her, says Kim.
Kim, can you hear us?
She's muted.
All right. How are you?
I am good. How are you guys?
Good, good. Whenever you're ready.
So, can you guys see me or no?
Can't see you.
I don't know why. Well, I thank you, first of all, for letting me speak. Hi, my name's Kim Thompson. Some of you may remember me from the relief center during the wildfires. I was a volunteer coordinator during that, and I am still the volunteer coordinator for our group and have since become a board member of the Estacada Community Watch group. I'm here to present ECW's upcoming big events. We'll still have some service projects thrown in throughout the year, but we want the community and the council to be aware of all the big events coming up through the end of the year. Our next big event will be our first responders appreciation celebration on July 17th. This event will be held in Hitcham Post parking lot from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. that day. This is free to the public. There'll be food, contests, games, and a lot of fun. We'll be presenting appreciation awards to our awesome brand new fire department and to the Clarkamas County Sheriff's Department. Next event will be our Estacada Strong Party, which will be held on Labor Day, September 6th, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Purpose of this party is to celebrate our community, how strong, resilient, and giving it is, not only during a crisis, but on an everyday basis. We appreciate how amazing it can be when we work together to help one another despite all of our differences. And we know we saw that a lot during the wildfires and during the ice storm. In October, we're gonna be hosting a haunted house for an entire weekend. This is gonna be a lot of fun for the whole family. This and other future events will have updated dates, times, locations, and all other necessary info on our website, estacadawatch.org, and on our Facebook page as we progress. During November, we're going to have our second annual Thanksgiving food box giveaway. These boxes will go to families who are nominated by members of the community. There's no minimum or maximum income needed to qualify to be nominated. In December, we'll be having our second annual Christmas Adopt a Family. We'll be heavily counting on the community for donations and participation to make Christmas happen for families in need this year. Families need to be nominated by members of the community to qualify. Nominations for this and the Thanksgiving food boxes are very easy, and as we get closer to that time, you'll find the nomination opportunities and deadlines on our website and our Facebook page. Santa will be back again to not only deliver presents to the nominated families, he will also be helping ECW by handing out goodies and taking pictures with the community on a special day to return later. There's no requirement to be a part of that incredible opportunity except to come out and have fun with your neighbors. We're so grateful for the time to speak about all these exciting events. As always, we love working in with and for the community of Estacada. We're excited to help raise spirits this year as well as provide services and resources to help those in need throughout the year. Don't forget, if you need any assistance at all, you can always reach us at estacadawatch@gmail.com or via our Facebook page under Estacada Community Watch. You can reach Brandy Littkey, our new president, who is also our event coordinator, at 503-272-9500, extension 101. I can also be reached at that number. If you're interested in becoming a member or volunteering with us, please don't hesitate to contact either Brandy or myself, and we'll get you all the information you need. I think it's important to note, we are a legal and registered nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. We follow all laws and guidelines, including COVID-19 guidelines during our events. Safety and health of our community is very important to us. We honestly look forward to seeing as many people as we can and doing more events with this great community. So, that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and the community for your time. We'll look forward to working with you guys further. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Hey, thank you, Kim. Are there any questions for Kim Thompson on the ECW? No? Let's see, anybody raise their hand? Okay, Kim, that's it. We appreciate you coming on tonight.
My thank you.
Yeah. All right. Before Citizen Community Group comment, Counselor Littkey has asked me to allow him to speak. I said I don't see a problem with that at this point. Is there any objections to letting Counselor Littkey speak? Before we go into community group comment. Okay, Joel, go ahead.
Right. I just wanna thank the community members for writing in today to share their views on the video released by Backwoods Brothers Production Company. However, as it clearly states on each video released, on their website and on the online shows, that show does not represent the city or the council in any capacity, and is the personal views of the host and the views of that company. The video is not a city matter. If you have a concern about the product that the company produces, you should address those concerns with that company. Again, this is not a city or council issue, as it is not run by, involved with, or connected to the city in any way. Thank you.
Okay. We are now at Citizen and Community Group comment. Sadie, do I have quite a few lined up here?
Yes. First, we'll have Valerie come in.
All right.
And Valerie, if you can state your full name and city of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Valerie, are you there?
She might not realize she's muted.
Valerie, is your mute on? I'm not getting anything there.
Okay. I will bring in Will.
Okay. Will, can you hear me? There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, wow. I got booted off there for a second. It actually booted me off and brought me back again.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right. Not your fault, you know, this high-tech thing and all.
Oh, yeah.
What are you guys all doing tonight?
Well, we're hanging in there.
Are you now? Just let me give you a quick introduction here. I've met you, Mayor Drinkwine, downtown when they the outfit came out this last July, the BOM demonstration took place, and I stood down there and helped to guard that statue outside of City Hall with some other folks. I just wanted to say that I'm just slightly concerned as to what might be going on right now with the city of Estacada in particular as concerns these COVID restrictions and the issues with some of the mandates that are further mandates, for instance, that seem to be coming down, for instance, from the state of Oregon, from Governor Brown's office. And, you know, harkening back to when I was down there doing the guard duty, so to speak, on that statue, and I saw how the community pulled together to try to, you know, to come together and let folks know that we're coming into our town from outside of the town that, you know, they were welcome to come and make their voices heard, but there was gonna be law and order. I really, that was a real breath of fresh air for me. I grew up in Upper Highland. I went to Colton Schools. My wife and I moved out here about three years ago, just this last March, and we've really taken to the surroundings out here. I grew up on a small farm, so living outside of the big city is nothing new to me. When I was down there this last July, it seemed to me that the people that were on hand, and then, of course, when the fires happened, the people that came together during the fires, and the way I saw people working together without any expectation of payment in any way, shape, or form, that told me that this town really had their act together when it came to taking care of business like that and looking out for one another. But then we turn around and we look at this COVID issue that's going on right now, and we look at these mandates that are coming down from the governor, and I can't help but think that there are people possibly right there, possibly right there in City Hall, and most certainly people in, you know, that some of the business owners out here in the sort that have forgotten what it means to be so independent and so liberty-minded. It seems like a complete contradiction, and I'm kinda, I'm trying to figure out how those two are going together. They seem to be kinda like oil and water. And that's pretty much all I gotta say about that, and maybe if anybody wants to, you know, has a comment that could give me a little insight, I'd be much appreciative. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Will. Are there any questions for Will before we move on? No? We thank you, Will, and we'll try to address some things later on as we move along. So, we appreciate your comments tonight. And next on the list?
Don Allen.
Okay. Don Allen? Are you there, Don? Can you hear me?
Hello?
Yeah, you're on.
Oh, okay. I got kicked out, back in, just like the last gentleman, so I had to adjust things. Okay. I did wanna mention something that was brought up previously, the Common Sense Sanctuary discussion, and and I hope that the city may revisit the idea of this mainly because, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Don Allen, and just wanted to express things on my own behalf. I live in the city of Estacada. Anyhow, on this Common Sense Sanctuary discussion, I feel that it was more or less put off to the side. I hope that you do revisit it, and not only I heard a comment there that the county has already addressed this, but I think it should be addressed at city level mainly to send a message to our governor where we stand on the broad-reaching changes that are being made without the citizens' vote concerning our Second Amendment rights. That's pretty much the crux of what I have to say about it.
All right. We thank you, Don. Are there any questions for Don? No? Okay. Don, we appreciate you coming out tonight. Next on the list, Sadie.
Jim.
Okay.
And Jim, if you can state your full name for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
All right, Jim, are you there?
Hello.
Hey, Jim.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, how you doing? City Council, how you guys doing?
Yeah, we're doing well. We're doing well, thank you.
Excellent. I just want, I'd like to be brief on this. This is something that was brought up last year. I just wanted to give you a quick overhaul of this. I'm here tonight. I'm sorry, my name is Jim Moriarty, live on Southeast Oakview Lane, and I'm here tonight to speak because I've been told multiple times that my issue on Southeast Oakview Lane is being worked on, will be put on the agenda, so I can speak in the future. Well, I'm here to speak. I'd like to speak with you about our neighborhood on Southeast Oakview through a proposal, traffic revision that was sent to the past Public Works Director, Tom Seal. I just wanna read you it quickly. Most of us who live on Southeast Oakview Lane between First and Southeast Forest have recently observed a substantial increase in both residential and commercial construction vehicle traffic on Southeast Oakview Lane. Many of these vehicles are traveling at speeds well above legal posted speed limit, 25 miles an hour. With the continued building and sale of residential homes in the area, we're certain to see further increases in the volume of traffic, and it will only get worse. Those of those who live, those of us, excuse me, that live on Oakview Lane, agree that we would like to find a solution to resolve this issue immediately. We need to ensure that all of us are safe to drive on our streets, walk on our sidewalks, and back down our driveways. Residents of our neighborhood strongly suggest that the city should consider installing two speed bumps on Southeast Oakview Lane. We believe that one speed bump should be installed at the crest of the hill near the mailboxes. This action would significantly reduce the speed of vehicles heading down the hill and help with reaction time and better visibility in the event of an immediate stop. In addition, we suggest a second speed bump be installed halfway down the hill on the curve. This will encourage people to slow down on the curve and provide better better visibility while traveling around the curve. I also provided all signatures of every resident on Southeast Oakview Lane back in July 20 of 2020. My neighbor recently, he's been in contact with city staff, specifically, I believe it's Denise Carey, concerning Oakview Lane between East First and Fourth Avenue. He told me that a traffic count was conducted on Oakview Lane. Don't know if that was northeast or southeast to compare with the one that'll be done in the future. My main concerns are the volume of vehicles and more specifically, the speeds of these vehicles. I've regularly attended these meetings for the past year and a half, and I wanna make sure that you don't forget about the current homeowners and taxpayers while majority is.
Jim, I'm gonna have to slow you down there. Sorry, buddy. Okay, three-minute warnings off, and we got a lot of people lined up, but we will definitely address this, something we'll look into and see if we can come to a happy medium here in the future. And let me see if there's any questions before I let you go. Joel?
Can we get this put on to the next council meeting agenda to discuss it?
Denise, is that something we can work on in the near future here? As far as coming?
What do you want to discuss? In our new TSP, they're gonna do criteria for speed bumps, so until we get that, we really don't have anything.
Okay. All right.
At that time.
Yeah, at least can we provide a timeline back to Jim or something here, so, you know, we know we're working, working on it and have something.
All right. Thank you, Jim. We appreciate that and charity, yeah?
Oh, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask Jim a quick question. He had emailed me a couple weeks ago, and I had received word back from Taylor Campy regarding this, and so I was wondering if, Jim, you had received that email as well. I thought you may have been carbon copied on that, but did you?
I did not receive any email.
Okay. Okay, well, I apologize. I thought you were CC'd on that, and I'm gonna send her her response back to you, because I did, I did send her an email.
Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for calling. Yeah.
All right. Next on the list?
Can we see if Valerie can come off of mute now, and I'll just move her out?
Okay. Valerie, are you there? She might be having problems.
Okay. I will bring in John.
Okay. John, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, I also wanted to talk about the constitutional, like, sanctuary topic. I believe that it's important for us to protect all of those constitutional rights and send a message that we have to, you know, defend them all equally. Otherwise, you know, what's the point? They're all very important. So. Um, yeah. That's about all I had to say.
All right. Thank you, John. Appreciate you.
Oh, what? You want me to say something else? Oh, don't worry about that. All right.
You must be talking to my wife there.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Well, we appreciate you coming on there, John.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. I'll bring in Tony. And Tony, if you can state your full name for the record, please.
Okay, Tony? Can you hear us?
Oh, can you hear me?
We can. Yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmen and women. I would like to read something, and I've waited specifically for this moment to come. I'm also 50% owner of Backwoods Brothers, and I would like to speak to councilmen that I've gotten to know through a crisis moment in our, in our community. And so I'm just gonna read this to you. Fact one, Counselor Littkey led a community-wide outreach during the most vulnerable times in our city's history. I've known him to, quote, shy away from public recognition. In fact, leadership from the back seat is his position of choice. He was not the first one I'd met when I'd come down to participate as volunteer at the relief center. So, of course, he's safety-conscious and minded. We all benefited from that gifting, lest we forget. Two. I've witnessed Counselor Littkey invite to the table those whom he doesn't entirely agree with for a casual cordial conversation. In fact, after the conversation, the person who spoke ill of Counselor Littkey over Facebook and other platforms apologized for waiting as long as he had to have an actual conversation, inviting Counselor Littkey to continue the conversation. Don't expect that he would agree to keep the peace, but he always looks for opportunities to make peace. Personally, I trust my multicultural, 11-year-old daughter with, to Counselor Littkey, and his family being confident that they would celebrate her diversity while allowing her to stay grounded in who she is, not using her background or ethnicity or gender as a crutch, but as a springboard to follow her God-given destiny. Four, I am proud to call Joel my best friend. I don't say that flippantly. A man who shows you who he is, believe him the first time, Maya Angelou. I've only seen Counselor Littkey treat everyone with love and respect, a quote from Counselor Littkey. Fairly giving them the avenue to express their feelings, opinions, and disagreement while graciously keeping an open, keeping an open mind, an open heart, an open ear to learn what he is not aware of. Yes, expect Counselor Littkey to stand by his convictions. Yes, expect Counselor Littkey to lead with integrity. Yes, expect Counselor Littkey to question the status quo. Yes, expect Counselor Littkey to be the elected official that you've placed in office to stand by what he ran.
Tony, I'm getting a signal from the timer. Sorry about that. It's a three-minute timer, so we have to go to three-minute rule. But we appreciate your statement, and we understand that you're presenting the fact that you know, Joel, and we appreciate that. So, thank you for your comment. Is there anybody who wants to speak to Tony before I let?
Yeah, can I get Tony's last name for the record, please?
Yeah.
Oh, Tony Long Drew. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yes, we have a call-in listener, so I'll bring and if you can unmute yourself and state your full name for the record.
Are you there? I want to take a second sometimes.
I've asked them to unmute, so it's not happening. It doesn't look like. Um. I am gonna bring Will back in for just a moment, so I can get his last name for the record.
Okay.
Thanks. Hi, Will, can you give me your last name for the record, please?
Yeah, it's McKinnney. M-C-K-I-N-N-E-Y. McKinnney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, if this call-in listener is not gonna be able to unmute, then I'll just, I don't have anybody else on the line.
Okay, we're, so there's nobody else waiting now?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Well, that went rather fast.
We did get another hand up right there.
Do we?
Yeah, just for the call-in listener, it's star six to unmute in case you're not sure.
Okay. Teresa just raised her hand.
Okay.
Okay.
Teresa? Can you hear us?
Oops. Hang on just one second. Sorry.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
There we go. My name is Teresa Fowler Davis, and I live here off a lakeshore in Estacada. And first, hi, Mayor, council members. I appreciate all that you guys do. I do have two questions. I don't need a full three minutes, but I do have two questions. The Sanctuary City, can someone explain more of that to me, please? Because I'm not really understanding where we were at with that. And then also, I'm wondering, with all the wonderful little COVID outbreaks that we're having here in our wonderful little city right now, is the county communicating to our city and our mayor and our council members what's going on with all of these? Because I know in the past month, we've had five restaurants shut down because of this, and I know this because I work in one of them. So, I'm wondering, is the county talking to our town about what's going on? Has that happened? Or are we just trying to be left in the dust on this and not being told what's going on? Because I believe also that there was an outbreak at one of the schools, if I'm not mistaken, and I could be mistaken, but I'm not 100% sure. So, I'm wondering, is our county talking to us? Is the state talking to you? Are we trying to figure out why this is happening? Are they trying to figure out why this is happening and how we're gonna fix it so it stops happening? Because I know, just living here and working here, I see everybody in masks, so what's the problem here? And I just wanna know if our government, the wonderful government in Salem, is actually talking to you about what's going on.
Well, I appreciate those questions. I'll start this off. I personally haven't been contacted about these. I know, I know about the restaurants, but only through people who have told me. But as far as our city staff, they might have better information on that. I will refer it to Denise. Denise, have you been contacted by the state?
We are not contacted if it's cases that are unrelated to city.
Okay.
The city staff.
Yeah, okay. And Joel, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, it's a couple things. A couple of the restaurant owners have spoken to me. They decided that when one of their employees was exposed, out of abundance of caution for the public, they decided to close the doors for two weeks, just to kinda make sure everybody was safe, including their staff. And then, the, as far as the school, we were notified that a student had been exposed to COVID in the school, so out of abundance of caution there, they quarantined everybody that was in that classroom for two weeks. That's what we got from the school side, so.
Joel?
I'm sorry, I'm still sitting in quarantine because I'm sorry, I'm still sitting in quarantine because of this. So that, that's why I'm wondering why our county or our state's not contacting you guys when we're having outbreaks like this, or supposed outbreaks like this.
I think there's some HIPAA laws that are involved in this as far as patients confidentiality. Um, is a lot of the reasons why we're not directly notified. But it, the fact that there's problems in our area that might be something we'd wanna know about, that's a different story. I, I think maybe um, there's been a little bit of a lack of communication, but you know, it's all, it's new for everybody. That's all I can say to this, you know, uh, we're learning as we go along. And I'm sure we'll get better at it as this happens. Um, but we appreciate your questions and I hope we gave you some clarity.
Absolutely. Uh, if we could clarify this Sanctuary City piece of that for me, that'd be great.
Okay, now on the Sanctuary City, I'll hand that over to Joel since he brought it to the table.
Okay.
And he can explain it to you.
The Sancti- there, there's two portions of the Sanctuary City. Do you wanna know about the Second Amendment portion or the, uh, the one at the Baker City I done?
Uh, all of the above, Second Amendment specifically, but all of the above, Joel.
Uh, the Second Amendment Sanctuary City, both, uh, both of them are resolutions that were proposed by other cities and counties. Uh, the Baker City one is where that started. That particularly identified where they declared the state of emergency on three portions of it. Um, and a, off the state of emergencies, they made a resolution that stated their position of their community um, as a majority on things that they were concerned about, issues that they're having, or, uh, things they did not agree with on the, uh, with the governor. So uh, the Baker City ordinance, uh, you can look that up and kinda see what they have there. Um, and I, I'm, I'm happy if someone contacts me privately. I'll send them all of the, uh, the links to it, uh, so they can look it up and judge for themselves. Uh, Second Amendment Sanctuary is a, uh, is basically a statement from a city, uh, as in they support the Second Amendment. They don't plan to make any laws, uh, that will inhibit, um, some of them go as far as to say that they will not comply with state or federal laws that inhibit Second Amendment. The one I brought at the table was to open a discussion about if we as a community wanted to make a statement, uh, where we lie as a, on our Second Amendment, if we support it, if we wanna make sure that we, we support and follow the Constitution and kinda along those lines. Both of them were brought to the table solely at the request of community members to, for us to have started discussion. So.
Okay.
If there's anything we wanna take from it.
All right, we appreciate that. Joel, does that kinda answer your questions, Teresa?
A- absolutely. Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
We appreciate your call. Thank you. Okay, we have somebody else on the line?
Yep, Trina Feldman.
Hey, Trina, you have three minutes. How are you? How are you?
I am good. How are you doing?
We're doing good. Hanging in there.
I definitely support making Estacada a Second Amendment city. Um, definitely support that. Unfortunately, I lost all my guns in a boating accident, but that's another story. Um, the main reason I'm calling in is I would love to see these Zoom meetings end and have in-person meetings. I am very technically challenged and I'm sure a lot of other residents are. So if we could get back to some sort of normalcy in Estacada and having these and into the Zoom meetings would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. We appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Um, do we have, uh, Joel, you wanna say something to that?
Sorry, it's a lot of things. Uh, this one is Denise wanted to ask you, um, say, if the governor goes through their plan to actually end the lockdowns by in the next month that we plan to open the city, uh, once those lockdowns have been lifted? And working up in person?
Yeah, as long as, yeah, there aren't mandates and, I mean, even if there are mandates, we can work with the mandate, so.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anybody else waiting in the queue?
Yep, we have Scott Stout.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanna say we have, um, two more minutes, so.
Okay, great. Scott, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you. Uh, we got two minutes left in the, in the, in the block, so hopefully you can, uh, get through this pretty quick so you can get your point out. Um.
Yeah, I, I think I can be relatively quick. I just had a couple of things. I was, I realized that everybody, uh, it, it seems like there's a lot of calls in regarding the Sanctuary City thing, but I'm wondering why it's such a push when there was absolutely no threat of anything per se, um, that, that came down the pike that would warrant something like this. There was a, I mean, I, I guess, I, I'm, I'm, I'm failing to see there's, I know there's, there's two sides to every story and I'm only hearing one side. Also, um, I, I, I don't, I, I, I'm trying to figure out if this is like an open forum portion and I'm, I don't. Um, I, I, I'm, I, I, I don't know. I guess I'm a little confused with that. Um, and then I also didn't understand, there's a, there's a video that's going on online on Facebook and I think it's the, the Backwoods Brothers or whatever that is, and there is, um, there's a piece on there about where, uh, I, I had something to do with mayors and the topic was how many purple flowers were in the community? And it seemed to me like we were taking a, a serious issue and marginalizing it with regards to a gardening thing, a very common flower. I, I don't understand if this is, I, I, I guess I'm a little confused and I'm a little bit, um, just uh, uneasy about the whole thing. Just due to the fact that it's, it's my understanding that a counselor is supposed to be, um, unbiased with regards to these things. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Scott. Thank you. Um, are there any statements to, Joel, you wanna say anything to that?
Uh, I, I think you already made this statement earlier. It's, it's, it's a company-owned separately thing. It's not a city issue, so. And I, I, it's very clearly stated on everything, so all that, that be a separate issue outside of the city.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else in the queue or are we clear?
Nobody else.
Okay. Uh, Joel, you wish to speak again?
Yeah, he did ask another question and I wanted to give him a response to that too. Uh, some of the things that, uh, set some of the conversations off was there was a recent bill, Senate Bill five-five-four, which deals with uh, gun control legislature and, and stuff, and that was recently done. Uh, so that's what spurred a lot of the conversation in the, uh, community um, with some of the recent bills that were proposed, some passed, some didn't. So just to kinda answer his question why that kinda stirred everything up there.
Okay. Thank you. All right, if there's no more questions, I'm gonna move on in the agenda, if that's okay. Everybody good? Okay, you've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Uh, you had a chance to read over the minutes. Are there any questions on the minutes? Okay, and the other thing on here is a resolution, twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-nine, a resolution of the Estacada City Council creating a city charter review committee. Um, if I have no questions, then can I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. Thank you. Next on our list, we have department and committee reports. Uh, you've all had a chance to read over the sheriff's report. Um, are there any questions on that? Before we move on? Okay. Uh, now we have committee, commission, and liaison reports. So I will start off with you, Jerry, my friend.
Um, I, my parks meeting is tomorrow. Um, I think it's tomorrow. Tomorrow or Wednesday, but, um, so I haven't had one. Uh, Parks and Recs meeting, Arts Commission, I've already reported on. Uh, the DEIC did meet. Uh, they elected a chair and a vice chair. The chair is Aaron Smith. Uh, the vice chair is Shannon Stout. I'm pretty positive on that one. Um, but, uh, you know, the things are moving forward. Uh, great conversations were had. Taylor is uh, uh, amazing. She ran that first meeting or I got, the first meeting that I was at. Um, impeccably, she, um, she was awesome. And then, uh, the next meeting will be taken over by the new chair, but, uh, uh, lots of excitement. They've got, um, not only are they scheduling their regular meetings every month, but they're scheduling at least one workshop a month, um, which is really good for that committee just to get in and get the, you know, elbow deep and, uh, really get going. So, uh, it's exciting moving forward. Um, that's all I have for my committees.
Okay, great. Uh, Paul?
I will be, uh, meeting with the library group later this week, but I did want to, uh, report out, I did meet with, uh, Forest Service and ODOT this past week, was hoping to just give a quick, uh, couple-minute update on that. Um, so about, about two weeks ago, went upriver with, uh, three owners of rafting companies. And Bill Senator, uh, Kenimer as well too, and we met with ODOT and the Forest Service. The meeting was, um, to impress upon us, I believe, to show the amount of work that's been done up there and the amount of work that's yet to be done up there. We met at, uh, three spots at the Memelous Way Station and then Moore Creek and then, uh, Hole in the Wall as well too. So it was, it was a, a great time, great opportunity to get out and see what's going on upriver. Um, I think the thing that impressed me the most is there's still beauty up there. As much as we hear about how devastating it is, and it is devastating, it's wonderful to see the, uh, pockets of trees that survived, especially along the river. The, uh, rafting company owners, they said it's still gonna be an enjoyable trip going down the Clackamas River. It's just amazing to see the amount of trees that survived right along that river corridor, uh, right there. And then the forest floor was looking very green as well too. So just seeing everything coming up in green was really nice. Had we been there a month ago when the forest floor was still black, it would've been another story, but it really looked good up there. Um, another positive, animals are returning as well too. So they've reported out that, uh, spotted owl, peregrine falcons, bear, bobcat, cougar, deer, these have all been sighted up there as well as a herd of elk as well too roaming around up there. And I can attest, the bugs are out in full force upriver as well too already. Um, negatives though, there's still a lot of work to be done. They're, they're in the process of assessing trees still, taking trees down. Um, they went through the process of that too. It's, it's, it's an audited process. They wanted to make sure we knew that, that there's uh, independent groups going up there verifying each other's work before something comes down. Um, but the biggest threat beyond the trees are rock slides. We, we were all thinking it looks pretty good up there until we started heading into that Moore Creek area or the Hole in the Wall area, which is past Fish Creek. So good distance up there. And there's this whole stretch off to the, uh, off to the east side of just barren, nothing. Mud, nothing, no, no, nothing. Just everything had come down. Uh, and that's the first time I felt overwhelmed by the destruction up there with seeing that. So they're still worried about the rocks. They were removing all of the fencing that goes along where the rocks, uh, the fence barriers so that they could address the scaling and take down the rocks that need to come down as well too. Just a massive s- effort. Um, the, probably the worst news, the whole time they were saying there's no way they could open up before the end of summer. And now ODOT just sent out an update saying that they, that we should plan on it being closed through the fall, which is devastating for any of the tourism, uh, folks, you know, needing people to go upriver. Uh, of course, there'll be no camping, but any kayaking, any rafting, any river access, nothing through the fall is what they're saying now. Uh, on the positive side though, Liddie Flats may open up sometime this summer, possibly in July as well too. That'd be great news, uh, to get a bunch of people upriver to be able to see, uh, or experience some of what Estacada has to offer beyond the city. So that's the update. I think one thing that came through is that we've got open channels of communication with the Forest Service and uh, ODOT as well too. They know the importance of getting the river and the highway opened up there for us and the economic impact that it has to Estacada. So I, I do appreciate that. I feel like they're listening to us. I think we are up against, uh, a big hurdle to get things open with the amount of work that still needs to be done up there. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Paul. That was very insightful. I appreciate that. Uh, Joel?
Um, actually, I haven't been receiving any emails from the, uh, planning commission, so I was gonna ask Denise to help me get in contact with them. So I ducked them emails trying to find the contact and I can't find them in the massive emails in there, so.
They aren't having any meetings in May, so they, they'll be contacting you when it gets into June and they do have a June, the end of June meeting, so you'll be getting.
That makes a lot of sense why I haven't received any back. All right, um, sounds good. Uh, can I ask a question to Paul quick? Um, have they, have they mentioned anything to you about when they might, if they're gonna plan to replant a bunch of trees or anything, uh, for the, for the barren areas you mentioned?
Uh, no, that did not come up in the meeting. I think the, one of the big threats that they have kinda oddly enough, the invasive weeds coming up and that they need to do something to control those. But they did talk about, uh, talking through the idea of maybe reseeding or getting some, some rooting plants up there as well too to hold things down.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Appreciate it. Uh, I have one question for Jerry too, real quick. That's, uh, Jerry, did they, uh, did the DEIC identify any of the priorities of things that they might wanna tackle off the bat or is that still kinda being discussed?
Um, that's going to be discussed at the, uh, workshop on Thursday, the twenty-seventh. That's one thing that, uh, um, you know, they've only had, they've only had the one or the two meetings. Um, they're trying to still feel each other out, get, uh, you know, figure out what their, what their responsibilities are going to be. Um, you know, so on the twenty-seventh, they're gonna, they're gonna work through some stuff in a workshop setting um, and then, uh, move forward from there.
Okay, a couple of community members asked me how to, they can join in or listen to that. Is that just on the website so they can see?
Just, just like any other, uh, commission, it will be on the website. Um, a link, uh, this workshop, there will be no public comment. Um, it is just a workshop, just like we, just like we have and we, where we don't allow public comment. But again, at their regular scheduled meeting, the once-a-month meeting, there will be, uh, area for public comment, just like we have two sections.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, Charity?
Uh, hi, yes. So I was able to, um, meet with the school board last week and um, just a couple of things, um, all fairly positive. So first thing I wanted to, um, bring to the community was, um, Director Shibahara had pointed out that um, they're preparing for the graduation ceremony for the seniors. And so since we kinda had a funky year, um, they're looking for community, community members or businesses, um, to make donations to gift bags that they would like to give to the graduating seniors just to make it something a little more special for the kiddos since, you know, kinda, kind of a weird year. Um, and then also, um, was mentioned, they talked about the play this year and that was a huge success. Um, math scores are up, which is good. There was a exception with EMS. Um, they didn't go down, but with the middle school, they kinda just plateaued, but, um, they're seeing a trend of kid, uh, kids being able to, the majority of them, being able to be in the classrooms that scores have um, been improving. Um, some COVID nineteen updates are, they have, um, now built and compiled an FAQ section um, that is, uh, both in English and Spanish. So, um, if it was looking kinda piecemeal before on the district website, it's now compiled into one thing and there's a big old FAQ and you can go there and, um, I'm pretty sure all your COVID school questions will probably be answered in that. Um, what's next? Just going through my notes here. And, uh, along the COVID, uh, nineteen topic. Um, so they had that, they had, did have, we did have that surge in the community. Um, we're seeing it go down again like we are in the county. Um, so they, the superintendent, um, Ryan Carpenter was saying the data is showing that safety protocols are proving to work. Um, it did sound like a lot of kids and staff and everything were hu- were home, but you gotta keep in mind that a lot of these, um, kiddos are in cohorts. So if one kid is, you know, either sick or even has an exposure, the entire cohort has to stay home. So they may be fine. We, you know, we don't know. Again, I, I don't, you know, HIPAA, whatever. But, um, a lot of times it's just for that extra safety precaution. Um, but we are seeing that the fan, the kids are coming back to school, staff's coming back to school and, um, they're, they're confident in their safety protocols, however, they wanna stay above board. So, um, Superintendent Carpenter was saying that they were going to bring in a third party, an outside party to just, um, come out into the district and see if there's any other ways that we can improve our safety measures within the school. Um, you know, just, uh, go above and beyond, so to speak. So, um, he was talking about that as well. Um, let me just go through, and I think that's about it. I have to report on the school board. Yeah.
Good, great. Thank you, Charity.
You're welcome.
And then on mine, I had, um, the, uh, fire department, but they have not contacted. And then on mine, I had the fire department, but they have not contacted me on a Zoom, and I'm wondering why that is. They did it first when we first started having the fire board was going through their hiring phase. But I have not been invited to another meeting since. So are we still in contact with them, Denise? Or is that something we have to initiate every time? Because they were sending me a Zoom.
We can call them, but also they always have it listed on their website. So if you know what night their meetings are, you can go on there and join. But I will call over there and find out what's going on.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the C four, I didn't attend this last one, but at the same time, I was notified that Katie Dinsmeyer is the new Clackamas Climate Board she is a part of. So she got on there, and that's really excellent. To have somebody from our area expressing our concerns from here, that really excites me to see our name out there. So we appreciate that. We want to congratulate her on that. That is all I have. Denise Carey?
I just have a couple of things. Counselor Licky had asked that, to see if we could get packets out a little earlier. One of the things that holds us up is in the council rules, you guys have till Tuesday to get anything to us that you want in the packet for the following week. So we cannot actually start putting packets together till Wednesday, and when they're large, of course, it takes us probably till Thursday morning to get them. So council, if there, if there's a problem with the time that you have to review your packets, we could certainly, you know, put on to change the council roles next week for an earlier time to get stuff in for the next packet. Do you want us to, to bring that to you next week?
How does council feel about that? Is that something you would be interested in?
It would be a simple change, just changing the date. So we probably have it the Thursday before that we would need things for the, not the following Monday, but the next Monday, and then we could start getting those ready on Monday.
If we got it by Thursday, how, how much sooner would that provide, bring the packets to us?
We'd probably get them out by Tuesday.
Okay, cool.
And then if, if we, if we, if something comes up after that Thursday, can we still get something added to the agenda? Or are we just S O L till the next meeting?
Yeah, we'd like to keep, we not, we don't like that, but that night, if it was something simple, we could do it, but if it's, if it's really something that can't wait, like if there's a, we have to pass something because we were just made aware of a grant or something that we have this deadline, but yeah, yeah, we could certainly work it out on, you know.
On emergency basis.
Ordinary cases, yeah.
I just don't want to miss out on, you know, having something important, make it to the agenda if we're putting it out earlier.
Ordinary things, that it would be great then. So I'll bring that to you guys at the next meeting.
Sounds good. Real quick, Denise, what, what's the rules on, in, sorry if I'm still learning this. What's the rules on adding something if we add to like an emergency issue, an important issue like Jerry mentioned, came up? Can we add something to the agenda that more, like the day of the meeting and to say, just add this on like we do with?
Actually, add some to the agenda. The council can add something to the agenda the night of. It's just if there needs to be research. No, then it's, then that's hard because we wouldn't be prepared for it. Like I said, if there's an emergency, a lot of times there is this grant funding that we'll find out about a grant, and you have to have it. You have to have something, a resolution passed by, they give you a week. That certainly would be something that we'd want to be able to get on, get in the packets, you know. But if there's an emergency, we can even have an emergency meeting. So we could get something on the packet, in the packet if there's an emergency.
Appreciate that. So the consensus is that we move it to Thursday before, right?
Yeah, and so we'll just do a small amendment next, next meeting to your council rules to change that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. R, do you have anything else?
Yes. So, and then also Counselor Lithkey was asking about the NCR zone and the five thousand lot minimum size. So the NCR zone is our high density zone, which high density means smaller lots and, and more dense housing. And this was one of the new zones that was created in our, when we looked through our zoning codes for about a year and a half, just right before Joel came on, I think. So the, this zone is new, there isn't, hasn't been any building going on yet in that zone. So you know, staff recommends that we kind of see what happens. We do have other zones, our, our one zone where it's seventy five hundred square feet. And so, you know, the, the decision was made that we want these low density zones, medium density zones, and high density zones. And that's where the, where the lot sizes come from. It, it's a, it's a comprehensive map change if we want to change something. It's quite time consuming. So staff recommendation is let it ride, let's see how it works out. And if we feel like there's a, you know, something that it's not working for us, then we begin that change. But again, it's up to the council. I'm, that's just the staff recommendation. So the council can discuss and, and do whatever they want for, for this.
Well, I think the council's already visited this, and we've pretty much set the zone in place. So I think we should give it a shot first before we condemn it. Because we did set that policy. I remember when that was on the, on the packet. So your, your request, I think, is what we'll ride with, staff's recommendation, until we see how this all works out.
And Charity, did you have something else?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna ask, last meeting you had mentioned that you were gonna have, or there was gonna be the wastewater master plan that was getting put together. Did that ever come to fruition?
We have the draft, and the plant operator and myself and Melanie are looking through it. And we should have that to you at the next council meeting also.
Good.
And it's gonna be quite expensive, but it's a very thorough draft, and it really tells you what you have to do and and where things will be. So we'll be getting that to you. But yes, we do have it, we're reviewing it, and it's a hundred and twenty pages or something. So it's taking a little time, but we will be getting that to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talking about live meetings, Sadie has ordered equipment in the chambers that will allow us to have the hybrid meeting where some people are in person and some people can zoom. That where it's been ordered, the installation is ready once we get it. So we think we should have that all by July one. So regardless of what happens in Oregon, we're hoping by July one, we can start having at least a partial in-person meeting if we can't have the full in-person meetings. So that, that's, that's on our, our list of things to do, and, and it's coming. The wastewater facility plan, we already talked about that. And then I just wanted to let you be aware, too, we've met with the garbage franchise people. Walkers and Arrow, they have not asked for rate increases in the last two years since we went with them. We were gonna do it last year, but then in the middle of COVID, we didn't feel like it was right. So they'll be coming for a rate increase at the next meeting. And we're, we're trying to do, when we set the franchise agreement, we kept it lower than what the county amount was for the same service in the residential rural settings. Because it was gonna, we didn't want it to be, it was gonna be a shock anyway, because it was a lot more than we normally did, but it also included carts. And so this year, we're gonna slowly try to bring it up to the county level. We, I, I hope you all got the flyer showing that we're trying out a yard debris way to recycle your yard debris. So we have the big bin down by the wastewater treatment plant that's open during outworking hours seven days a week. And people inside the city limits, of course, we don't monitor it, but it's for people inside the city limits to bring their yard debris. And there are some guidelines, like the branches have to be, you know, they can't be huge oak tree branches, but they can be smaller and a certain length. And we're gonna be doing that in the month of May and June, and then again in the month of September and October, and kind of see how that works before we what, what we're told by the garbage franchises is people don't use their yard debris. You know, they only use it four or five months of the year. So to have that big can sitting at their house, then you have the issue of they have three large cans sitting at their house. So we're gonna try this out and see how it works for everybody. Before we make a decision to actually add another big, large can to each person's house. So you'll hear that next week, and we'll have both companies there. And that's all I have today.
Okay, thank you. That was very enlightening, and we appreciate that. All right, we're at council business, parks and subdivision discussion. Now you all asked to bring this forward for discussion, so here we are.
Yeah, so we put in there the, you know, the, the wording in there says that the council or that the city may, but, but it is not required about parks and subdivisions. And, you know, most of the time when we talk to the developers, they're pretty, even though it says may, if, if we can get, sit down with them, they're pretty reasonable. And, you know, they want to make their subdivision a place where people want to live. And, and having amenities like this is certainly gonna benefit each subdivision. So it, it really has, we haven't really had anyone tell us, no, we aren't gonna do it when we have approached them about it. One of the last ones that we had, they're willing to do it, but they aren't gonna have an HOA. So, you know, the, the last couple we've done have been HOA parks that will be operated and run by the HOA and taken care of. So if they don't have an HOA, it makes it hard on everybody because we've, and we've had experience in the past. And so I'm gonna say up at the foothills, foothills area is supposed to have an HOA, and there was a green space that, of course, the HOA was defunct for years and years, and the screen space was terrible. And so the county foreclosed on it, and then the city did buy it because we figure we can do something with it, which we haven't yet, but we do take care of it and keep it clean. So that's a problem if they aren't gonna have an HOA because there's no one to take care of that park if we're gonna require it. It just so happens that, that, the it's Dugan one and two that has they have a great area that we're gonna have, that they, they will put everything in. So the, do you, do you want to ask something before I?
Yeah, Jerry, Jerry wants to ask something.
Yeah, so I just, I, I just wanted to know if we can table this discussion until the next meeting, because Counselor Dunsmear was, felt very strongly about this also. And, you know, I don't want to go through it all tonight with us, and then, you know, her to have concerns that come back. So I would like, if, if everybody's okay with it, I would like to table this discussion until the next meeting.
I'll just kind of finish my thought, and then I can redo it at the next meeting. Joel, do you want to talk now or when I'm done with?
Just a quick comment, I, I'm cool with what Jerry said. But if you could send us some of the ordinances so that we won't miss any.
Well, you should have got all the ordinances in your packet.
Yeah, I missed seeing those.
You know, so what we, we came up with this Dugan Estates one and two. One isn't gonna have anything, but two is gonna have acres because the creek, along the creek, they're gonna build a pathway that meanders, a seat, asphalt pathway with bridges over it to get to the other side, and maybe even added some extra pathways between the houses. So it's more available to the community. And then they also have a large area that can have a fifteen hundred square foot park in it. The, the thing about these, they will be city owned because they are not gonna have a HOA, but staff feels like it's important to have these areas. So if it has to be city owned, then we'll take it. They're gonna make it nice for us, and then we'll just take it over. So I'll, I'll, I'll go over all this again. We'll put this on the agenda when the full council is here so we can discuss. But that's just kind of the discussion. And maybe we can discuss changing the code. I'm gonna, this kind of came up quick, so I'm gonna talk to Happy Valley and some other cities that have a lot of neighborhood parks in their subdivisions and find out how their codes are worded. And I should have that to you guys by the next meeting if we're gonna put this off till the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So that's all the discussion we'll have on that right now, and we'll bring this back and kind of go over it a little bit more at a later date. So we appreciate that, Denise. Thank you. Okay, we are at the next citizen and community group comment. And do I have people in the?
No, I don't.
Wow, okay. We're at mayor and council reports and comments. So I will start off, Jerry. You're up again.
As usual, thank you staff for an amazing packet and all the hard work that you put in. Really, you guys are amazing. We, we are, we benefit from you guys so much. You guys are awesome. So, so I've gotten, I've gotten some feedback from the community. One thing that I, I will make the request for a business owner is, so we are the fa, we are a face. We are the voice of this community in a lot of people's minds. I understand, no, not everyone agrees on every aspect of the COVID guidelines. But some businesses are enforcing the mask mandate inside their business. I'm just saying that we need to, as, you know, our, as a city council and mayor and city staff, we need to make sure that we are following their rules. Those businesses are, you know, they, they're the law when it, when it comes to their business. So if you go into a business and they require masks, just wear the mask, you know. And, and please don't hassle the employees for asking you to wear a mask or handing you a mask. So again, we need to go by their rules, you know, inside their property. So thank you.
Nothing further. Thank you for the community members that spoke out this evening. Really appreciate those that show up and speak, and thanks to staff again for putting together a good report for us and a good, good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Yeah, another ten. I did want to read a comment that was mentioned earlier in the chat. They didn't have a mic, so I just wanted to get that voice out there. It says, I do not have a mic right now, but agree with Will that called in, and also with Alan and John. I wish to voice my support for what Commissioner Lithkey and had mentioned in regards to the, to a number two. I think he meant second amendment, Sacramento Sanctuary City and a common sense city. I'm outside of city limits, but have lived in SDK for thirty years. We need to preserve our city and our values. I don't think any of us want to see SDK to turn into Portland. So I just wanted to make sure that their voice got heard because they kind of type it out, so. Other than that, I appreciate it, Denise, for kind of hearing what I had, had requested throughout the week and got back to me on those. And I appreciate your hard work and all the counselors too, because all, all reading those packets and going through all that, there's a ton of work that comes out of that from the counselor side, too, and trying to deal with the normal jobs and get through that. So I want to make sure that that's recognized as well, including, I mean, Mayor Drinkwine, you two, you have to read through the packets as much. And there's a lot of things done in the background that counselors, like for example, Counselor Stobel going up and taking trips up above the, up above in the fire line and meeting outside of there. There's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that people don't realize. And I just wanted to make sure that's mentioned, and thank everybody for putting that in there and and all the work and all the citizens that they called in. And I know there's several that wanted to speak, but it looks like they had some Zoom issues. So I'm hoping you guys get a chance to speak at the next council meeting or when we go back into in person. But a lot, a lot of good things coming, and I appreciate everybody, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Joel. Charity?
Yeah, thanks. So I just want to, you know, just echo what both, you know, both Jerry and Joel and Paul were all saying, just thanks to city staff for the work you put into the packets every week. I did appreciate that this was a much smaller packet. I will, I will say that. I, I, I want to say that I, let me just say that I'm very even though some of the emails that city council got this over the past couple of weeks were you know, I mean, maybe things that we didn't want to hear. I, I want to say, you know what, keep it coming. Because if we don't hear those voices, we do not know. We live in our own world and are a lot of times our own echo chamber. And so if we are going to represent you, we need to hear your voice. I, let me see, I'll use myself as an example. So when the, so during the election, when the school bond was coming up, and I was going around the neighborhood, and I was campaigning, and I was chatting with a lot of neighbors. And of course, they wanted to know my opinion. And of course, they wanted to know my opinion on the fire and the school board. So I, you know, was saying, well, okay, I'm for I am for the bond and You know, that's what I voted on. I have my bias because my children are now both middle schoolers. And so I'm I'm thinking to myself, Wow, I want to see my kids go to a very nice school. I know it's going to increase taxes. I don't want my taxes to increase. But if we don't do this now, we're going to have to do it later. So here, these are my thoughts, right? And these are the thoughts of a lot of moms my age and my neighborhood are having. So I go to one of my neighbors and we have this conversation and she brought up a point that I didn't even think about. Now, it didn't change my vote, but it made me think and it made me think of a different point of view. She had mentioned, I understand you have children in school, but have you thought about our seniors and them being on a fixed income? And what these tax increases will do to our seniors with a, you know, on that are on this fixed income. And I, You know, I just was flattered. I was like, well, no, I haven't. That I, you know, it just it floored me because it just that's so kind of common sense. I mean, I have grandparents, they're on fixed incomes, that sort of thing. And if she hadn't brought that attention, I wouldn't be sensitive to the community members who Were very much against the school bond passing that year, whether it be from COVID, whether it be from job loss or You know, being on a fixed income. And so I get that. And it was nice to have that conversation with her and it was very Peaceful and amicable and she understood my point of view and vice versa. So My point in saying all this is that I I truly do, whether you agree with me or not, whether you agree with Counselor Licky, whether you agree with Counselor Strobel, Ten Bush, Gates, Dunsmear, really do reach out to us. You know, we're we are open to conversations. You know, especially with being in COVID, I just I don't, you know, I really don't get out and chat with a lot of people. I haven't met Counselor Ten Bush in person, nor have I met Counselor Strobel. And so You know, when you see just faces on a video screen, you know, it it kind of tends to be a bit robotic and it takes the human element out of it. So when we get emails and when you do call in and and give us your point of view, we really do listen. And we're not brushing you aside. So I would continue to to do that. I encourage you to do that as a community. And Yeah, I love it that you're speaking up. So And that's all I have to say.
We appreciate that, Charity. Thank you. And on that note, I guess I'm last on the list. And I can say you guys are like, How do I put this? I'm like a proud parent when I sit here and I listen to you guys Come up with these wonderful things that you say, like what you just said, Cherry, because you you actually showed me That you are out there being the people's electeds. You're actually listening. You're actually taking the time out of your lives To make everyone's better. And I appreciate that every day. So I thank you for all that you do. And I appreciate another good meeting and I appreciate staff. You always show up on time and you keep us looking good out there. So we appreciate you every day. So thank you for another council meeting and we will adjourn.